Yeah.
Yeah, you see it. You know why? You know why? So let's get, let's get going on tonight's show. Good evening, everybody. And we are back. Hey, how are you? How you like?
How are you guys?
Good, good. How you like the weather?
I'm loving the weather.
Loving it. Loving it.
I'm absolutely loving it. Um, we're getting a break. We're getting to see some snow and a bunch of different things that we really don't get to experience here in Southeast Texas. So I'm excited about that.
We're great. You guys have, you have, you have lights?
Oh, yeah.
Power?
I, we did maintain power. I kind of slipped. That's kind of why I'm not on the, uh, I did a little slip and fall, so I'm laying down, but I'm good.
That's awesome. That's good. I mean, it's been, it's cold. It was cold and it has been cold. And we're expecting some more cold weather to, in the morning. So, but hey, I'm ready. We are ready. So, uh,
LaDonna. I do want, yes, one little announcement, um, because we had been focusing on my Southeast Texas Stacey Abrams Presents. Due to the bad weather, we did postpone our event for tomorrow. It's gonna be next Wednesday, February the 24th, from 6:30 to 8:30. The candidates won't change. We just kind of postponed it because we didn't want people to kind of be out in the bad weather. I didn't know what the nature of the weather would be tomorrow evening around 6:30 and, um, just kind of give people time to regroup that's been without power and without lights and all of these different things. And I, baby, I don't want them to miss my event. So I want you to have plenty of time to gather yourself and be prepared.
So you know what? I'm, I'm gonna try to show up next Wednesday.
Yes, I think that would be great. I hope that you do. Cause everybody was looking for you, Tony.
I'm gonna try to show with my mask on, this social distance. Okay, guys, let's introduce our guest for tonight.
Well, first, I guess we should say Knowledge is Power Podcast Live.
Well, I'm gonna come back to that. Uh, because we had, you know, I was gonna come back to that.
Are you gonna bring him in? Okay, well, go ahead and bring him in.
You bring him in. And I know we're gonna go into our intro, but, uh, I don't want you to let folks to know then who's, who's our guest tonight.
Oh, we are super excited tonight. We have Miles Haynes running for city council ward four again.
Two, war two.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, war two. Um, the opponent of Mike Getz. So we are excited to bring him on tonight and hopefully we can gather some information about who he is, why he's running, what is his platform, what does he plan to do in Beaumont Ward Two?
Yes. So we'll be right back with you on Knowledge is Power Podcast. Welcome to Knowledge is Power Podcast Live with your host, Tony Redfroh, and my co-host, LaDonna Sherwood and Francis Lockins.
Knowledge is Power Podcast Live starts now.
Hello, okay. Okay, LaDonna.
Welcome, 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 Mr. Miles. Let me tell everybody what Knowledge is Power Podcast Live is. It is a platform to share important information by educating Southeast Texas African American communities with valuable information on health, education, finances, politics, and business. We pride ourselves on having our hand in the pulse of the community. We bring you all the up-to-date information from Golden Triangle and Southeast Texas communities, making sure that you know what is going on. And we are super excited to have Miles tonight, who is running for city council ward two. I misspoke earlier. You guys keep me straight. He's running for ward two. I'm super excited. Miles, one question before we actually get started, before I turn it over to Francis, tell us what area encompasses ward two?
So I think for the main aspect of it is the west end of Beaumont. Uh, that's where people kind of, they realize the war two area as. Uh, when you go north to Folsom, that's a different award one. So the map, you know, for a lot of people that haven't reached out to me can be a little bit confusing. Uh, but for a general sense, the west end of Beaumont, uh, encompasses a war two area.
Okay, we're excited. Here we go.
All right. Well, I'll start off with the first question, Miles. I kind of, um, met you, uh, at Lamar University and then by way of just community events, uh, Rotorack and a couple other communities that we sat on. I had no idea that you would be running for, um, or even interested in local politics. What caused you to, um, uh, focus on community and politics?
I think, I think it's so many things that goes into politics that a lot of people don't understand. And I think the wealth of my background, just being involved within the churches, within the Hope Center, whether that was on the west end of Port Arthur, in the Calvertiers, Lewis Manor, uh, getting my degree in social work, working with different agencies in the area, getting my masters in public administration and being plugged in and understanding city management. So, uh, since about 2013, I've had my masters and I've been, uh, studying. I have great friends that worked in the public sector, but I've been focusing more so on the private sector. I've been involved in different community things. Like you said, Rotorack, uh, the Chamber of Beaumont, um, Leadership Beaumont, um, the Greater Chamber of Mentorship Program. I think all these things start to kind of direct me and understand how our decisions are made in our city. Uh, I've always had a goal of being in politics, but I wanted to wait to the right timing. Uh, my wife has been very supportive of that. Uh, that's something that we feel is, is the right time and now. So, uh, for me, I've just looked at the landscape of the city of Beaumont and how many things are affected by city councils. And so that became more important over the past years. And so I've done a lot of studying. I've attended city council meetings. I've reviewed city budgets. Uh, I've seen the nuts and bolts of what moves things through city council. And so that's important to me. And that's why, um, I decided to start, um, my process of getting this out of local politics through city council, uh, war two position.
Okay. What do you feel is your strongest attribute, um, to that seat?
I think, uh, at this very moment, uh, my ability to, uh, understand the city budget, uh, understand how, uh, to work with other city councilmen and get things done for the entire city while getting things done for war two. And so I think that's a huge thing, having that background of masters in public administration, understanding, uh, what the reserve fund is, you know, and different, different aspects of the city budget, understanding what the bigger parts of the budget are. Uh, so I think that's, that's a large part of my skill set. Another aspect, I think, is my relationships. So like I have a lot of relationships throughout different community groups, uh, through different organizations, all through the city of Beaumont. So those have given me opportunity to be mentored. And so I'm willing to be mentored as I've been over the years. And that shows that I can work with the older generation. Also, I can work with the younger generation. We need someone who's gonna be in that position to, uh, consider all factors and lead, uh, with a sound mind. And so I think I, I bring that as well. So I think it's a, it's a lot of things I think I bring to the table, uh, but those are some of the key areas that I can highlight for you.
Okay. Well, I, oh, go ahead, LaDonna, cause I've got a hundred.
Yeah, you brought up an important point about not just worrying about war two, but for the greater good of Beaumont. How important is it to focus your efforts solely on war two? Or like you mentioned, Beaumont as a whole, not just your ward. What, what do you, what would you say the ratio of importance towards your ward or the overarching better good, greater good of Beaumont?
I think if we look at it correctly at all, it, it's equal because if things are affected on other wards, eventually it matriculates to a ward two. Yeah, we can look at flooding situations or different infrastructure. So we, if we begin to divert so much dollars in one area, then we'll, uh, miss other areas. And so I think it's all equal. I think that's why you have, uh, a representative for each ward up there, uh, to collaborate, but also lead their particular wards. I think it's very important. Uh, but you need vision, you need strategy, uh, you need an innovative mindset to really put forth ideas, uh, that can be, uh, things that are collaborative in, in ways that can grow our city.
Right. Because I was listening to a podcast just before this one and the gentleman was stating that the money, uh, for the budget is broken up equally to the four wards, but sometimes certain wards don't actually need that money. There are more ward, there are other wards that may be suffering more. And I just kind of wanted to get your, you know, input on, is it ward two first or is it the Beaumont as a whole or, you know, but I'm glad you kind of addressed that because sometimes that money may be needed in another ward.
Yeah, I think that's very important. And you know, it's incumbent on people to elect, uh, individuals that represent that ward with the best interest, that have ideas to move these dollars forward and understand how to attract these dollars as well. Because it's one aspect of dealing with the current budget, but it's another educational aspect of how do we get these resources into our community? So there are different incentive projects out there. Just, I mean, you really have to kind of be a forerunner, be a visionary. You gotta be excited about the growth. You gotta collaborate with the citizens. You gotta sit in town hall meetings. You gotta knock on doors. I think there's a lot of work that has to go into it to represent the citizens. Like they need representation, but we need that education that's gonna push them in that area. And I don't mean like, uh, uh, in, in a sense of a degree. I'm just meaning in the sense of continually being a student of municipal government or local government.
Go ahead, Francis. Tony.
Oh, you kind of touched on this just a while ago in your question. What, I heard you say, um, that the time is now. What makes you feel that this is your time?
Oh, that, that's a, that's a great question. Um, I think one, you, you have to do things like this with the support of your family. And my wife is a huge support, uh, factor in this. And so that's one aspect of it. Uh, I think two is you have to have an understanding of what goes into local government. And I think that I've derived that understanding. And three, you have to be willing to put in the work. And with the, the space I'm in now, I think that I'm willing to put in the work in a way that, um, I can base it off some of the relationships and different organizations. So I have some a framework to work from now. In years past, I didn't have that framework and I've always submitted myself to elders to learn different things, uh, in all aspects of the city. And so I think I'm at that place where I've been able to, uh, kind of ingratiate myself in the community of Beaumont. And now I have a better understanding of how to move the city forward. Uh, it's not just me. It's not gonna be just a strong candidate, but it's gonna be working together. And because city council is, it's a teamwork type thing. So I understand that, um, and I have the support of my family. And I think that's why the time is now.
I want to know what sets you apart from the other candidates that may be running for your ward. What is separating you from them? Why?
Uh, one, I think that me and my wife have, uh, were both from different areas. I'm originally from Houston. Uh, my wife is originally from Bridge City. Uh, we have shared experiences that allow us to see the world differently. Uh, we've developed relationships across philosophy lines that allow us to work with different people. Um, we've been involved in the community. Me and my wife did leadership Beaumont together. Uh, I served on the steering committee. So we've, we've been able to see Beaumont from a micro level and we'll also be able to see it from a macro level. Uh, I think that my youth is an asset, is not a liability. Uh, my education could be an asset because it's very, it's focused on city management. That, that is the sole focus of a masters in public administration degree. Uh, so that education, not just recent, but years past, uh, has helped me. Um, so I think those are things that separate me, um, in, in a race like this and understanding that the political climate has become divisive. Uh, that's not, uh, um, blaming any particular individual, but that's what it's become. And we need someone who's going to be at the table with a sound mind, uh, that can work with both sides, that if we are to have any type of police situation in our city, someone that can sit at the table and diffuse, de-escalate these type of situations. One that the community can feel safe with if we are to have a situation. So you're gonna need a proactive leader. And that's what I bring to the table, not just reacting to situations to bring solutions in that manner, but proactively collaborating. Uh, that, I think that's a huge asset. So that, that's what separates me from the other ones.
I'm so excited for you, Miles. It sounds like you're talking about diversity and inclusion and, um, you know, being proactive and, and engaging the community. Now, you mentioned something about, uh, your youth being an asset. How do you plan on engaging younger voters and, you know, a lot, a lot of younger voters in the community feel disenfranchised. They feel as if their vote doesn't matter. They feel as if they're being left behind or they don't count, or why should I participate in these elections and voting stupid and all of these things that we, me, as a get out the vote person, we have to combat. What is your plan to engage younger generations and making sure that they feel the franchise and voting matters and that they can be vocal by exercising their right?
Yeah, I think that's a multi-layered answer. You know, it's almost like advertising. You can see a billboard and that's one form of advertising. You get a flyer, that's one form of advertising. Social media is another form. And that's the way that we're gonna have to tackle this issue of low voter turnout and seeing that we have more youth engaged. I mean, obviously we can, throughout the process of, uh, city council, even after the election in May, we can begin to start, uh, getting people more comfortable with the voting process because I think this comes as like a new stage of life and we just throw voting at them when it's time to run for a race. But after the race is done, we don't, we don't have enough education going on about this. So it's going to be an uphill battle, but I think within particularly, we're talking about the African American community, uh, families are gonna be important. Uh, black women are gonna be important in pushing, uh, this. We saw Stacey, Stacey Abrams do a great job, uh, in this recent. So we, we have to look at what has worked and look at, get it behind those people who are motivated, uh, to get voter turnout because it's not gonna be incumbent on me as a person running solely. It's people in the community that have a heart for having others turn out to vote. And I have to partner with them and, uh, see this vision through because it's not my vision. It was their vision. I'm just glad to be a part of it. Uh, so I think it's important to see where, where have we had the greatest success and getting behind those people who champion that voice of high voter turnout because we know that your vote is your representation. And we, we have low voter turnout for years. I've reviewed the numbers, particularly in a war two area. I mean, the voter percentage is so low. And so we have to increase that, uh, because I think people have come to a place in life where they just don't want the norm. They don't, you know, I think that may be a motivational factor. Usually issues or maybe injustice, things like that, uh, typically motivate people to vote. And we're facing a time where we're seeing, issues that look like that. And so we have to get behind people who are advocates for high voter turnout, support them. It's not just gonna be a Miles show. It's gonna be LaDonna pushing this. And everybody else that's pushing this, we have to support them because this is gonna be a community thing. It's not gonna be an individual thing. Well, I can take the credit at the end of the day.
You're right. Yeah, I think that, um, you know, just speaking a grassroots effort, if that's what I hear, what you're saying, people that are gonna get out in the trenches and really pick up people and get them to the polls and drop them off and send out those texts and send out those phone calls and, uh, you know, blast them on social media or challenge them, make them feel engaged in different ways. I'm super excited to hear you say that. Tony, do you have anything?
Yes, I sure do. Now, you know, I do. Miles, Miles, Miles. I'm coming at you, Miles. Listen, Miles, um, Miles Haynes is running for ward two within the city council of, for Beaumont. He's a candidate for the city council in Beaumont. But Miles, I've got a couple of questions I want to ask. First, are you willing to work hard towards obtaining certain grants that's available for the city?
Oh, yeah, for sure. That's, that's obvious. That's obvious. It comes through research. It comes through, um, so I was a part of the Texas City Manager Association Group and being plugged into other cities who are being, who are, uh, getting these resources helps educate us. It's not just gonna be me as an individual plugging away on Google or any, uh, peer review research articles or quantitative, uh, information or anything like that. But it's gonna be uh, having a network of people in different cities and how they have, uh, grown their cities from where, where they have been to where they are now. Uh, so there are a lot of things that we as a city, around 118,000 people, we, we have a lot to, uh, learn from. And there are other cities who have gone through this same process and pivoted and have grown their cities. So it's gonna be, part of that is gonna be, uh, in, within network of people who are doing the same type of work. That's why every industry has some type of networking, uh, aspect. And another part is just gonna be, uh, research and, and that proper education comes back to it. Uh, I got my masters in public administration, which is really focused, focused on uh, the city management aspect. And we know that we're in a strong management form of government in the city of Beaumont. So I think those are gonna be two uh, of the ways that I would try to attract resources. Uh, and it could be outside of grants. There can be other ways that we can attract these same resources.
You know, we have a, a lack of, of people of color, uh, on the city council. And we also has a lack of people of color on the city committees and advisory boards and that. What do you, uh, what, are you willing to place an African American on those boards or committees? I mean, this is the people behind the scene that's, uh, that, uh, happen to make some of the decisions that it brings, it's brain that to you, proposes to you. So are you willing to, to add some African Americans or people of color, uh, on those committees?
Yeah, let, let's place some value on, uh, the, the African American race. There are very intelligent people in our community who are forerunners, who've been visionaries, who have this education and intellect and have the ability to articulate this stuff within boardrooms and all committees. So of course, I think that's an obvious yes for me. Uh, there are plenty of people out there that, that have this skill set within our community that sometimes just have not been reached out to or just been overlooked for whatever reason. But I definitely gonna be, be a proponent of that because we need to, uh, get more resources. I think for me, it's a bottom line is these people are maybe the best person for the position. Yes, people of color have that type of skill set and ability and we need to, we need, I'm gonna focus in on just like that. They have the skill set and ability to move the needle. And that's the most important thing. Uh, and yes, they are black. Yes, they are of a minority, uh, ethnicity. Um, so for me, that's obvious, yes.
Of course, I will be, I will be on your ass if you don't. So let me ask you this. Um, we're minority contractors. Minority contract. We, we, it's, it's, it's got to change. I understand it is a nine to 10% or 20%. Uh, all the minorities only get 20% of the contracts. Uh, how can you, how can we address that? And knowing, and if you are elected as councilman in a war two, that you're gonna put that on your agenda in favor of us, uh, so that we can have an opportunity for having more minority contracts.
Well, I think it starts with one, hey, we're in the middle of a pandemic and the sales taxes down. So that means that the businesses are affected. The hotel occupancy tax has spikes, you know, due to recent events here and there because the hotels get filled up, but they, uh, you know, from a general consensus, they're down. And people still paying property tax. And so we're paying a lot of taxes, but we, we need to attract the type of resources and people to the table. So I think that's like, like the previous question, it's an obvious yes for me. Um, but I believe that these individuals have the skill set. It's not just putting you on there because you're black. It's you've put the work in. You know, there are a lot of people who put the work in and we've got to highlight it in that manner. We've got to even, I mean, this is Black History Month. Looking at all these uh, stories throughout history where people are pioneers of different things. These people deserve to be at the table. And so that's the way I look at it.
Being accountable, we're, you know, we're, you know, and I, I say it in a way that we want to make sure you guys be accountable. So tell me, what make you, what make us feel, make us feel better that you are much better than, uh, your opponent, the mighty Mike Getz?
Could you restate that question again?
I want to know. We know that I, I, we'd like to keep you accountable. Every councilman, we want to keep accountable. Uh, make sure that you accountable, make you accountable. I'm saying some, I'm talking a little fast now. But I'm gonna ask you, what make, try to help us to understand this. What, what, what can you do? Or what, what, how can you make us feel like you're much better than your opponent, Mike Getz?
The accountability piece, the accountability portion of the opponent.
So, so I think one level of accountability comes down to how do we measure that? And that's one of the things I want to highlight about my platform is we don't have ward specific data. So if you, we don't have war specific data, how can you measure my success or failure? It is a matter of testimony or somebody said I did good. And I mean, we can just kind of skip over this conversation, but we've got to have a way that we have a litmus test on these city councilmen. And so that's incumbent on me collaborating with the community. So we develop some type of criteria, a rubric, uh, that we could grade our councilman by. So we can know what's success and what's failure. But at this point, there's a lot of, there's a lot of data for the city, uh, but broken down awards, that can be a little bit difficult and it's not easy, it's not easily accessible. So, um, I, I think those things are gonna be important on how you grade someone. That's the form of accountability is you're putting me in office. Um, and the way you hold me accountable is, you know, grading me by numbers, by metrics, like what decisions did I make and how, who did they impact? And so I think that's gonna be incumbent on both parties, me in the community or representatives from the community that have a way to hold these city, uh, leaders accountable and not just saying it, you know, just like, like I'm mad when it's their certain decision comes up, but have a strategic plan. We need more strategic planning and not just reactive planning. We need more proactive planning. Uh, so if it's important to certain communities in Beaumont, then they would already have their list and say, this is how we plan on grading you once you get in office. And we want to have a check-in with you if you're open to that every quarter. And so once we grade you every quarter, then you can go back to the general public and say, hey, listen, this is how we have graded Miles, uh, and I think that we think he passed the test. And so I think that's the more strategic way we need to go about it. Uh, not just, um, not just a, 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 a blank message. We need a very specific message in how we can grade our leaders in the city of Beaumont.
Let me say this, Miles. I want to add something into, uh, Tony, because we've been having, I've been having calls about this doggy park. What is your sentiment on this GD MF and doggy park that everybody losing their mind over? And why are we spending money on a dog park and the dog park this and the dog park that and da, da, blah, 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 blah. Please give us a take on the doggy park.
Yeah. So I try to do my best job from my understanding regarding the dog park, uh, this typically, uh, from my understanding, this is how the process goes. It takes about two votes to get something on the agenda. Now, once something's on the agenda, then that's presented to the public. And it takes four votes to complete that very objective. Typically, when there are bigger ticket items, that goes through a work session or maybe an executive session or something, private meeting with the city council and everybody who will be having a vote. So something like the dog park goes from, hey, we're discussing this behind closed doors. What is everybody thoughts? We've brought this subject up within this circle and now we're gonna present this to the general public. Uh, we're in the middle of a pandemic and yes, we have a reserve fund. A reserve fund is very similar to a savings account. So in the middle of a pandemic, when we're not really sure if we'll hit another spike, if another shutdown happens, or even we look at the situation with this recent ice storm hitting us just right now. How will the city use those reserve funds? So we have 44 million in the reserve fund at this very moment. So I think the idea from my understanding, just watching city council meetings is that we could pull from that reserve fund to make a dog, uh, to create this dog park inside of Rogers Park. And I think in the middle of a pandemic, that's probably, uh, it, it could be a tough fiscally conservative decision. Like is it fiscally conservative to do a dog park in the middle of a pandemic? I'm not sure. Uh, but I think the council has tables.
It's not, it's not a good idea.
The general.
I was waiting on that. I was waiting on your answer. No, you smooth. Now you smooth, but I was waiting on the answer. Is it, is it time?
It, it, to me, it's not.
We have other things. We have other issues. We've got water issue, brown water issues. We've got, uh, rotten streets. Uh, we've got, right now, people living without, without power. You know, we've got a whole lot of, uh, uh, issues in Beaumont.
Yeah. And I mean, we, I think we have a dog park in the city of Beaumont and maybe we want to upgrade security in that manner. So people can enjoy the dog park if it's in a less secure area or maybe looking at another facility like the athletic complex where you have basketball court, tennis courts, all those facilities. There was more family friendly. They have a bigger parking lot. And maybe that could accommodate something of this nature. But I think, uh, I'm not the person who votes on it. The city council did not, I mean, they went against this, uh, item. And I think it'll be tabled uh, for future conversation from my understanding. But, uh, obviously they decided it wasn't the time. So I guess I don't have to speak to that.
Would you be, um, would you lean on, uh, having a limited term on council? Would you be, would you lean on having limited term on council?
Am I for term limits?
Yes.
I'm not opposed to term limits. I'm for voter turnout. And I think when voters turn out, that's, that could be a form of a term limit. I'm not against it, I support term limits. But we've had so much low voter turnout over the years that, you know, maybe people haven't got out and voted. And I want to encourage people in that manner that if we get out and vote, and we don't want the representatives that are running, then we could select the individuals that we do. And so I, I would like to see that grow over the years, but I'm not against term limits. I'm open to it.
Well, how can you, how, what do you have in mind to boost the increase in voting?
Well, I think this recent national election kind of brought either a lot of conversations at the dinner table, and people had some hard conversations to have, and so issues in life that have to be personal for an individual lead them to vote. And when it comes to a city council type election, it just, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of personal issues, because city council can have so much jargon or language that people don't really understand. So the focus is not there. People are worried about their family, their kids, they're in the middle of a pandemic, so they're trying to stay safe. They're, you know, people are losing jobs or taking lower wages. So I think the focus is not really on, you know, on city council and just having to drive that direction back to city council. It could be, if we want to make different updates to our city, we post that throughout the city so we can keep people engaged throughout the whole voting process. That's going to be key. But it's, it's the highest, it's the voter turnout that we need to really focus on as well, in addition to that conversation.
So what I hear, and I've heard a lot with Mike gets, is that with his constituents, he is really involved in War Two. I, I am actually a voter representing War Two. But what is your plan, if you have a plan to continue the camaraderie, if elected, council for War Two? How would you maintain that? How would you keep your name in the voters', I guess, mouths, if you will, in a positive way, of course?
Yeah, I, I think, and I want people to understand that when you become a city council, you have a little stipend you get. I think it's a monthly stipend. You get a car stipend and get a cell phone stipend. So following up on issues when it comes to individuals is, is the management component of being a city council. But there is a leadership component outside of that as well, that is within council and that is regarding certain decisions within your ward to move it forward. So I'm committed to following up on every issue that comes spontaneously or however it comes to follow up and make sure that those things are solved for my citizens of War Two. But in addition to that, we've got to focus on what type of technology we're using to best plan infrastructure and solve those situations. From my understanding, I think the city is using some group that has driven all 85 square miles or 82, 85 square miles of the city of Beaumont, and it has graded the infrastructure at different levels. And when you have that information, then we could tell what areas of the city have bad infrastructure and what areas of the city have good infrastructure. And so therefore, we know how to proactively, as best as possible, try to solve some of these problems. Another important part for me is quality of life. I think parks are important, especially in the middle of a pandemic. I mean, I think people start to understand a little bit better now. We need better amenities at our parks. I mean, and I think that's important across all wards. So when it comes to something like that, I think that should be an all-ward type decision. Well, if we make any changes in one part, let's, let's give a key example. Let's say it was the dog park, for example, and I was quote-unquote for a dog park, then I wouldn't call it, it could be a dog park at Rogers Park, but you would dedicate a space at each park within each ward. So every ward would dedicate a certain space, and they can maybe do a basketball court or a disc golf, whatever that budget would allow, so that the whole city has improved in regards to the parks. Think those things are going to be important, and security is going to be an issue as well. I think we don't, we don't realize that security or crime has increased just a little bit. I mean, when you got sales tax down, when you have hotel occupancy tax down, then the workforce is slowly starting to kind of dwindle a little bit, and we have national legislation that could really impact our area as far as the type of jobs that we have. And that's the kind of conversation we need to have, so we can have people back to work or more consistently getting the kind of jobs that they were previously had before the pandemic started. Those things are going to be important. So I'm focused on the local economy, infrastructure, quality of life, and I want people to be able to measure what I'm talking about. I think we need ward-specific data. We need to have data that we can provide to our citizens and say, listen, this was a, this is what I have done, and the numbers show it. And at this very moment, we don't have a lot of ward-specific data across all wards. This is just general information we have for the city of Beaumont, but we, you know, we don't have everything broken down per ward. And I think that's important to measure how we can get projects done and what kind of funding we'll be able to attract to certain projects if we don't have the numbers. And we can't be reactive in all our leadership, we have to be proactive.
Okay. All right, guys, if you have any more question, we can go to the comment board.
Let's see what the community has to say.
Okay, let's go to the comment board. Okay, Miles, Jonathan Williams is asking, experience would be a main point of your opponent. Will you, how would you combat that?
Well, I think we have to look at it from, in the last 10 years, the city of Beaumont hasn't really grown that much. And so what, you know, what is the experience we're talking about? Is this the experience of growth? Is this the experience of the things that we want in our city? And if that's the experience, then yes, that the incumbent or that individual has the upper hand. But when the experience is not proven in the aspect of its growth for the city, to me, that's not my focus. My, my focus is not that kind of experience. Maybe we need a new experience.
Okay. Terry Roy is asking, in, in War Two, we need more equality amongst the neighborhoods. Amelia area is in need of work.
Yeah, that, that's, I can understand that that's a huge component, that I've talked to Terry, and I've seen different posting from people in that, that area. You know, I, we have to go back to the idea of what the digital age has done to our communities. We, I grew up knowing my neighbors. We used to hang out with our neighbors. That's not the case anymore around different communities within Beaumont. You know, some people could pull in their driveway, and soon as they pull their car in, the garage door, garage door comes right down. And that sense of community is not there anymore. Obviously, we have to work through the neighborhood association groups and maybe door knocking, but we've got to encourage citizens to get back to that community, because community was all we had back in the day, and I think we're losing that sense of community. And when we lose that sense of community, the accountability in these communities for our leaders sometimes goes lower and lower. So we need to get back to grassroots, understanding people's issues and presenting that data. That's why the data is important, to understand that, hey, if it's Amelia area that has horrible infrastructure, then we could focus in on that. Obviously, this is not an overnight situation. So I'm not going to present this false promise that we can solve it, but we sure can have data to know how we're going to go about solving or trying to fix these issues over time.
Okay, we've got a new one, let's see here. Nope, I thought we did. Yeah, okay, we do.
I have a question. Are y'all ready?
Yeah.
Um, I have a question. We've been kind of just asking you some questions. Do you have something that you had prepared as far as what your platform is or what your five hot topics are that you plan on addressing with the city? Or do you have a plan for like your first 100 days or whatever your main five topics or points are that you plan on addressing that are going to be your signature Miles Haynes, I'm elected? This is what I'm working on and focused on.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest things that's going to be on my platform is data. I'm going to keep driving at home, because you do not know how to measure a leader if you do not have the information to measure that leader by. We know it takes four votes within council to get something done. You know how many it takes, you know how many average votes it takes to get somebody elected? But after we get those numbers, what are the numbers that we're going to grade this elected official by? And so I want to present that type of platform or that type of thing to the community where we know how to measure certain things, whether that's crime, infrastructure, quality of life, parks, and different things like that. I think that, that's going to be one of the main components. Another one is going to be a workforce initiative. I think it's essential that we start to understand the digital space. And I mean by that is the e-commerce space. We asked our businesses to have lower occupancy, we asked them to shut down. But did we ever present them with any training for the businesses who were not ready for the digital age? I mean, some of these businesses have to sell online, and so we could better equip our businesses in the business community. And obviously, we have the Beaumont, the Beaumont Chamber of Commerce and Southeast Texas Economic Development Foundation. But we need to present that type of information to a city like Beaumont where the median income is a little bit under, really, it's under 50K. But how do we best prepare these businesses when it comes to website presence, SEO, Google Ad, PPC, things like that? They're going to be essential in, in, in surviving during these times. Like, if you can't manage a digital presence with a business, it's going to be really tough to survive unless you had a really strong customer base. And that's not, that, that's not the store-favorite small business. So small businesses in our local economy is important, and another aspect of that is these local contracts, making sure that we're trying to increase that. Now, there's no legal way to say we must award this much contracts. I would, you know, probably need to do way more research before I put a number on that. But focusing in on the type of business that we're doing with organizations or businesses outside of our area and try to focus that, those dollars into our city, I think those are going to be important. To me, quality of life is important through the parks. Those are how people are enjoying family life for the most part, outside of other things. Another one is transportation. Transportation is, from my understanding, people are talking about cutting that budget. I'm not for cutting the transportation budget. We need to make that more efficient, because those people who get on transportation don't have the same capabilities as me. They can't use an app to do ride share. So we decide to cut the, the transportation budget, that's going to eliminate a lot of people who can't afford cars at this very moment. So we need to be looking at, that, to me, that's a, that's a citywide issue. That's, it is very easy to look at that and say, hey, this is what I'm talking about when it comes to transportation. So those are just some of the main things that I'm going to be focusing in on.
Okay, two minutes, two minutes. Answer this question here. How important it is to get the four votes?
Oh, that's very important. That's very important. That's really how you, you really should grade your councilman within the council. So when he steps within the chambers, and we know that it takes two votes to get something on the agenda, but it takes four votes within the council to get something passed. So we can't blame someone while we didn't get something passed. It's on, it's on the skillset of the individual. So if you have the skillset, then you should be able to work collaboratively with your councilmen to get four votes. It's that simple. That's how you grade a councilman inside of the chambers. It's that simple.
Thank you, Miles Haynes, candidate for War Two, Beaumont, Texas, city councilman. We wish you all the best, Miles and Francis, LaDonna, you're heading.
Of course. I am super excited about the job you did here tonight on this platform, Miles. And as you know, I will still be hosting your candidate series meet, meet and greet on March the 3rd. We didn't move your date. We just moved the other candidate back a week. So we pushed AJ Nembak. You're still at your scheduled time at Nell's Sports Bar and Grill. That's 2820 Washington Boulevard on Miles 3rd, I mean, on March 3rd, you can meet Miles Haynes, and he's running for War Two. And we are going to have a really exciting candidate meet and greet, and I'm looking forward to hosting this event. And I can't wait to see what you're going to do in the future. I'm looking forward to it. Oh, there we go.
There we go. We got you up there, girl. Okay. Hey, listen, also, on April the 3rd, we are going to, let me move this, this bar out the way, which bar is that? Let's see here. There we go. We're gonna, we're gonna have the Beaumont Urban Podcast Team. And we're going to have a candidate debate April the 3rd. That's going to be with DJ Man TV, Perspective, the Kickback and Blue Table Talk, and of course, Knowledge is Power Podcast crew will be there as well. This is going to be a big, major mass debate for the candidates, April the 3rd at 4:30 on a Saturday. And we hope to have all the candidates, so you can get to know who your candidate is during for the next upcoming election. So Miles, you can share, look, one minute. Let you share your last thoughts with the folks that's listening.
Yes. Hey, I'd like to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to me on this night. I know it's kind of tragic for some people in different parts of the city. They've lost power. I got personal, my, my parents in Houston have lost power and can't get access to gas. So we know that taking this time out in a, in a tough season, it can be hard. But visit my website at votemileshaynes.com, visit me on Facebook, Miles Haynes for City Council War Two. Message me, get to know me. I'm sitting down with citizens, having dinner, we're having conversations. We're trying to move the community forward. I'm excited, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Miles Haynes, candidate for War Two, Beaumont City Council. Thank you, everybody. This is us again on Sunday. We're back here Sunday at seven o'clock, right here on Knowledge is Power Podcast Live.
Thank you for watching Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. Be sure to like and subscribe to all Knowledge is Power social media pages.